Good afternoon. I'll call the February 10th, 2020 Salina City Commission meeting to order. I would look to staff and ask that the Kansas Open Meeting Act required notice has been properly provided.
Yes.
Thank you. With that, we will have the roll call.
Mayor Hoppick.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Franz.
Here.
Commissioner Hodges.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Thank you. Those that are able, would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we will move into awards and proclamations.
Item 3.1, the day of February 14th, 2020, as League of Women Voters Voting Rights Day in the city of Salina and recognize the 100th anniversary of the League of Women Voters. Lori Trow, President of the Salina League of Women Voters, will read the proclamation.
Good afternoon, and I have several of my league, local league members here. So, celebrating the 100th anniversary of the League of Women Voters of the United States, whereas the League of Women Voters was founded in 1920 as a mighty political experiment by the four mothers of the suffragist movement at the National American Women's Suffrage Association, and whereas their goal was to help the 20 million women who were granted the right to vote by the 19th Amendment understand and carry out their new responsibilities as voters. And whereas with the success of this effort and the tireless efforts over the last 100 years to strengthen and uphold its mission to empower voters and defend democracy, the League has become a trusted, nonpartisan grassroots organization. And whereas the League has sponsored legislation and fought in the courts to protect and strengthen voting rights and access and for free and fair elections, civil rights, children, community health, and education. And whereas the League has consistently been noted for its nonpartisan election information, including sponsorship of candidate forums and information on state and local ballot issues, as well as its commitment to register, educate, and mobilize voters. And whereas the League champions government systems that are open, transparent, inclusive, and equitable. And whereas the League believes that active and engaged citizens irrespective of gender, ethnicity, or political affiliation are the hallmark of democracy. Now therefore be it proclaimed February 14th as League of Women Voters Voting Rights Day.
Okay, thank you. Does the League have any events planned to celebrate the 100 years?
We've had some events already. We did an event at Kansas Westland. The State of Kansas League of Women Voters created a traveling display, and we had it at Kansas Westland, and we had a reception. And Dr. Davis, the mayor at the time, and Melissa were there. And then it went to the Smoky Hill Museum, and then it was at the NAACP State Meeting. We're hoping we may be able to get it back again within the next nine months. We're planning some other events. The State League will be at the State Fair for the whole two weeks with all the different leagues supporting the 100th anniversary and the 100th birthday of women getting the right to vote. And I will say, in today's paper, I guess they still call it the neighbors section, it said, it was from 1970, Friday will mark the 50th anniversary of the League of Women Voters. The League was formed by women who led the fight for women's suffrage, who saw the vote both as right and a responsibility. The Salina League was formed in 1954. Mrs. Robert Jakes was our first president. But so we will be having some more events coming up, so.
Okay. I have a signed proclamation for you to take with you. 3.2.
Item 3.2, the month of February 2020, as Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month in the city of Salina, Andrew Lagerman, D-VAC victim advocate, will read the proclamation.
Hi, I'm Andrew. I'm the teen victim advocate over there at D-VAC. I'm also a Salina South High student. Recently, last year, we came across this topic at our own school through the play Outrage, which demonstrates how easily someone can fall into teen dating violence and the dangers it has. One in three adolescents in the United States is a victim of physical, emotional, or verbal abuse from a dating partner, a figure that far exceeds victimization rates for other types of violence affecting youths. And females between the ages of 16 and 24 are most vulnerable to intimate partner violence and sexual violence, experiencing abuse at a rate almost triple the national average. Whereas high school students who experience physical violence in a dating relationship are more likely to use drug and alcohol abuse and are at a greater risk of suicide and are much more likely to carry patterns of abuse into future relationships, making it harder to break the cycle. Young people victimized by a dating partner are more likely to engage in risky sexual behavior and unhealthy dieting behaviors, and the experience may disrupt normal development of self-esteem and body image. And nearly half of teens who experience dating violence report that the incidents of abuse took place in their own school building or on school grounds. And whereas only 33% of teens who are in abusive relationships ever tell anyone about the abuse, and 81% of parents surveyed either believe teen dating violence is not an issue or admit they do not know of it, of its ability to be one. And whereas by providing young people, parents, and professionals with education about healthy relationships, warning signs of abuse, and relationship skills, and by changing attitudes that support violence, we recognize that dating violence can be prevented. And the Domestic Violence Association of Central Kansas needs all of Salina to work towards ending teen dating violence by empowering young people to develop healthy relationships, assisting victims in accessing the information and supportive services they need and deserve, creating better and more resources for young people in need, effective intervention and prevention of policies in schools, and engaging in discussion with family members and peers to promote awareness and prevention of the quiet epidemic of teen dating violence happening around us. Therefore, D-VAC invites the City of Salina Board of Commissioners to designate February 2020 as Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month, and to urge the citizens to recognize and assist all those who serve the right and needs of the victims of teen dating violence.
Thank you, Andrew, and I think it is very important that we educate and inform young adults that this type of activity is not permissible and can be very harmful. Do you have any programs or educational projects going on this month?
We have an awareness event on Valentine's Day, February 14th, from 12 to 1:00 at the Salina Public Library. They're welcome to bring lunch during the presentation and schools out for the session. This is just kind of an educational thing of teen dating violence and the signs and what to do if you caught yourself in one. I also kind of brought the February newsletter about our events and everything that's going on in D-VAC for the month of February.
If you could come forward and I'll give you a certificate and give those to the... Okay, with that, we are now at the portion of our agenda where we have Citizens Forum. This is a time where citizens desiring to speak on an item which is not on the agenda may do so. Discussion is limited to five minutes. Is there anyone who'd like to come forward?
Deborah Corrales, 124 East Charlotte. I'd like you to meet Gizmo, Mason Landry's therapy dog. They live in Clark's Harbor, Nova Scotia, Canada. Clark's Harbor has a ban on pit bull terriers since 2011. In July of 2019, he was served paperwork and was told he had 72 hours to remove Gizmo or he would be seized, taken to the pound, and possibly killed. Mason Landry decided to fight and had Gizmo's DNA tested. You'll see what he is. Gizmo, it turns out, is a Level 3 German short-haired pointer and wire-aimer, meaning he carries 20 to 30% of the DNA of these two breeds. He's also a Level 4 for Australian shepherd and Labrador retriever, meaning he carries 10 to 19% of these two breeds' DNA. He also carries 9% or less of boxer DNA. Here's the levels of DNA 1 and 2. 75% is more for Level 1, and Level 2 is 37 to 74%. This is, no pit bull terrier DNA was found in Gizmo's DNA. Thus, the judge has ruled in Gizmo's favor, saying the town had not provided enough evidence that Gizmo was a banned breed. Dr. Victoria Voith is a professor of animal behavior at the Western University of Veterinary Medicine. Dr. V brings her experience in animal behavior, the human-animal bond, animal sheltering, and visual breed identification to the National Canine Research Council, where she has been an advisor since 2010. According to Dr. V, visual identification, even by professionals, is often wrong. In one study, Dr. V found that in 87.5% of adopted dogs, breeds identified by DNA analysis were not the breeds stated by adoption agencies. Animal shelter workers were right in guessing the heritage of a mixed-breed dog only 12.5% of the time. Because of the inaccuracy of visual breed identification, Dr. V questions current public and private policies based on dog breeds. Breed discriminatory laws or breed-specific legislation is not the answer. I ask you to reopen this, put it back on the agenda, and give people more than one week's notice to come forward. And I would also like to nod to Prairie Village for repealing their ban, making them the 43rd city in Kansas to do so in the last two years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tyler Sartain, 233 North Kansas Avenue. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, City Staff, my fellow citizens. I have two issues kind of I want to touch on real quick. First issue to kind of go along with Deborah, the public safety on BSL. I would like to see a study session done on this with local input from our local veterinarians, animal behavior specialists, people in our own colleges that have more knowledge on that, and also nonbiased reviews of the pit bull-type breed from others in the state of Kansas who have experience working with these dogs. That way we can have kind of a variety from every where in Kansas. Also, I think the public of Salina should be giving their input as well, and to do that, I think a public survey, whether online or in person, would be great. Rather than just asking our own groups of people who we kind of hang out with, it'd be better if we just opened it up to the whole town. I believe everybody in this town has a voice and that they should use that. Our City Ordinance on Animals in the City Code is well-written, minus the BSL, in my opinion, but that's just me. I would recommend higher fines and harsher punishments for those who don't follow our city codes because law is the law and people should follow it. And I feel that having higher fees would deter people from misusing and abusing their pets. And with those higher fines, I would suggest that some of that percentage go to our local animal shelter to help out with any other coverages. The questions on the public survey should be neutral and among the lines of whether all dog breeds should be welcomed back into Salina, with the public input on what standards the owners of the pit bull-type breeds would be held to if they are welcomed back. Kansas does have its first pit bull police dog named Cano, who helped out on a drug bust in Great Bend back in 2017. So if these dogs can be trained and given a second chance at life, should they get it? We give many people many chances every day, so why not give some dogs ones? Second issue, our walking trails in Salina. Couple weeks ago, I was at Indian Park, walking my dog through the trails, and I couldn't go through some of them, mainly because I think it's just damage from the elements. There's a lot of holes, and one of them was close to an edge where if someone tripped into that, hurt themselves, fell over, that could be pretty bad. And if you're not as agile as you once were, you know, you can kind of go along with that. But that's public safety for me. But do we have our parks and rec, do they go and evaluate that like every month, or how does that work?
They do it on a regular basis. With it being the off-season and the weather elements, this probably isn't the time that it's a priority for them.
Gotcha. Okay, but I was just wanting to bring that to attention, so thank you, guys.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else?
Gary Swartzen, 528 South College here in Salina. I would just give, advise this group that just made the presentation to get an opportunity for people to, get the community an opportunity to vote on that dog issue. And there's a reasonable way to do that. Staff and attorneys would help you figure out how to do that. That's what I encourage you to do, see how many people in the community agree with you and how many do not. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, if not, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of February 3rd, 2020.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve? Mayor Hoppick, I move we approve the minutes of February 3rd, 2020.
Second.
Got a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, consent agenda is approved, 5-0. We'll move on to administration. 7.1.
Item 7.1, award contract, construction contract for the Mulberry Storm Sewer Project
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Dan Stack, City Engineer. Oh yes, thank you. And we're gonna try a little new technology today. We've got a pointer that hopefully goes through that. Yes, it does. Okay, very good. We are going to talk about the Mulberry Storm Sewer Project first. Project we've been working on for quite a while, started in December of 2018. Really might have even started before that. We've had historically some flooding with this intersection for a long time. This is just east of Santa Fe, around Mulberry Street. The old, the new hotel is here, parking lots are here, it drains all the way over to the Smoky Hill River Channel. It's just, it's been a slow draining area, which we have in town in a lot of areas, but this area being more of an interest to the downtown development because it's, the new hotels going there. And when they did an analysis of that area, it was drastically undersized. We couldn't quite get anything to even work out as far as what size storm it was, so we felt like it was definitely something that we should put on the radar for improvements. The problem we have here is there's a railroad crossing, so when we, you mess with a railroad crossing, you try to cross under it or over it or do anything with the railroad, it's a long process, we all know that. But we started this in February of last year, 2019. The hope was we'd get it in the works for 2019. We didn't get a railroad agreement until November, and then couldn't get it to you till December, and so got it signed, and so here we are. We bid the project and got bids on that just a few weeks ago. A little more history, the pipes that are there are, they're old. I guess if you look at that inlet, it's very small, it's an old brick inlet. It's hard to really see, that's kind of the inside of it, but these are what they look like out there. I mean, they've served a useful life. We believe this, this is the original town of Salina Platte. It's been there, meaning that could, some of these pipes are, could have been there a long time, you know, after, you know, when curbs and gutters were put in. We don't have old plans on it, but it's old vitrified clay pipe, which is just clay pipe underneath the road. It's, it works, it drains, but it's 12-inch pipe, so it's really pretty small. Our minimum today is an 18, and with the design analysis, it shows this should be a 30 to a 36-inch pipe, 24 to 36-inch pipe. So that's, that's the exit at the river channel, right there. You can see the end of it, it's kind of broke off, but it's, it's a, it's a 18 to, I think it's 15 at the end, it's, I guess I should have that in here, 12 to 15, so I think that's the 15-inch end. Just been there a long time and served its useful life. One thing to note with this project, this is a drainage area map, so I guess I just want to give everybody appreciation for how much this really does drain. And if you look at our storm sewer design in town, this is where the current Homewood Suites Hotel is being developed. Here's the Taco John's area, new parking lots, basically. Here's Opportunity Now, I guess it's not Opportunity Now, it's a, it's a USD 305 building. I can't remember what's there now, but it, most of it drains this way, all of these residential areas to some degree, Salina Journal, 4th Street Railroad, all the way over to the river channel. Here's the Mulberry Street Bridge. So it's a sizable drainage area. All of that trying to go down a 12-inch pipe is just not adequate, never was adequate, but you know, different design standards back then, it did drain and it went away eventually. It just went slow. So we feel like that to try and get it up to current standards and codes and design criteria with the design that the Homewood Suites did for basically upstream and downstream developments, they had to design the storm sewer for their property. They showed us how bad it was downstream, and so we programmed it for last year under our SubCIP program. As I said, we weren't able to get a bid last year, so we're here today with two bids. One from Smoky Hill, one from Stevens. We feel like they're close bids, they're within a couple of percentage points of each other. They're both higher than the engineer's estimate, though, that is a problem. So we felt like that the engineer missed it with the, of course, as you can see, they really did miss it, so that's, that's one thing to speculate that, and it's one thing to see that it was missed. And in review of those bid unit prices, the bid items that were in there, they just didn't have enough money. There's some really deep storm sewer in here that has to cross under the railroad and then cross under some sanitary sewer pipes as well. So once, once you start going that deep, just it's really hard, it's a lot harder to build, and so they should have factored that in. Factored in some, some things, but not enough, and not even, not, definitely not enough on the manholes, curb inlets, and the pipe. It's a very deep system, up to around 12 feet deep. So 12 feet deep's starting to get into sanitary sewer depths, so it's, it just costs more, takes a little longer, have to use trench boxes, so it's, it's just a lot more work, and that was reflected in the bids. It seems like since the bids were closed, that there's, I don't see how there's any way to go back and rebid it or try and get more bidders. It just seems like it's, that's the cost of doing work in this, for this. Both of those are reputable contractors and bid it pretty close. Definitely some things to consider as well. Union Pacific Railroad, that is a track that is not, not used a lot, but we have to have the same level of service with flaggers, no matter where, when they're working on the track, you have to have a surveyor that makes sure that when they bore under the track, it doesn't sink. So there's all the things that, even a track that's used once or, you know, not very often. So we still have to have all that stuff there anytime we're around it, so it just adds a lot of cost. The risk and the work requirements for UPR probably are in these bids as well. Smoky Hill has successfully performed a lot of work for the city of Salina in the past, and feel like they'd be, they'd do a good job here. They just recently completed Downtown Streetscape Project. They actually have some more work to do in this area. In front of the hotel is still pending, they haven't finished the hotel enough for us to finish the Downtown Streetscape Project, so we're actually putting in some storm sewer at the very upper, upper end of this, and this would hopefully allow them just to keep going. So I would recommend that we award it, but we understand that it's, it's over budget and we had to come up with ways to pay for it out of our SubCIP, so I will stand for questions.
Okay. Who wants to start?
If this, when you install this, I presume, first of all, it is a brick street for the most part? Will this go underneath the street or is it down, can it kind of run along the side?
It's running along the south side, so we're trying to keep it out of the road.
Okay.
Kind of under the curb and the, between the curb and the sidewalk mostly. So we, we anticipate, depending on how we can protect the sidewalk and the curb, probably demolishing quite a bit of that, but we have those bid items in here, just in case we do.
Okay, so that'll be replaced, but you don't anticipate tearing up the street and having to replace parts of the street?
Some, because we have to connect to some of the existing manholes that are out there and existing inlets. So we will be going out into the street in some areas to connect to those and have to reconnect them to the system. So there'll be some brickwork.
I would just comment that that street just on the east edge of the railroad tracks has some brick that's in pretty sorry condition.
It does, we noticed that.
And if we can somehow get that repaired, it would be good. Either concrete apron or something. I know going back with brick is expensive.
It is. We'd like to repair that, because yeah, that's, it's, it's close to where we're going to be tying into, not quite, but we hope we'll, we'll get over there and fix that because it's unsightly.
You know, and I want to make sure, and I think your presentation actually addressed it, this is sized to not just handle the, anything additional that might be coming from the hotel and the other development, but it's also sized to deal with the original problem.
Yep. Yeah, it's a pretty large drainage area, we learned, and it's going to have to take, take, take account for all of that. We have some crossings under the river. All, a lot of them are similar to this, so we've, we've seen Prescott, we've seen Iron Avenue, some of those are old vitrified clay pipes that have similar challenges, but this is one that we feel like we should address now, at least with this development.
That, that existing corner had a building and the, you know, it was all paved and ran off quick, the hotel's not adding to the problem.
No, it's still...
They may be a little bit what their parking areas, but the bulk of it on the block with the hotel is, is the same as it was before. But it, the pipes there now are just in really poor condition and, and need, need to have some work done.
Anything else? Commissioner Franz?
First of all, I'm going to go back to something we talked about last week. It's okay. I just owed you, Dan, an apology because I grilled you pretty hard about the HDR engineering fees for the Greenway, Smoky Hill Greenway path. And I went back and, thank you for giving me the August 5th date. I went back and I looked at that, and while the initial, while the initial proposal was something in the $20,000 range, I was comparing the original to the overage.
Larger project.
And did not see the interim step. So I just wanted to acknowledge that and thank you for getting that information. Did staff have a chance to take a look at our 2018 and 19 CIP?
I think we have some handouts in response to your question.
Yeah, because I'm not really sure that I have questions regarding this project specifically, but something that's a concern to me is I'm kind of looking to see, you know, like when was the last time that we did have, you know, a major brick street project? Have we continually been kind of rating the same sources in order to make up shortfalls in other areas? Commissioner Franz specifically referenced an area along this stretch that's, that's pretty rough. And I've, I've had so many people coming up to me saying, I've lived, you know, on my brick street for, you know, 20 years and it's, it's never been touched, which I guess speaks to the longevity of brick streets.
Yeah, they're great.
Which is, which is awesome, but at the same time, I just, I'm a little concerned.
I'll, I'll start with 2017. We've had a brick street rehab project at around $99,000.
Okay.
Every, basically starting with the sales tax in 2016 or 17, but this is, you had me go back to 17, so I just, I can say that we did a $75,000 brick street rehab project in 2017. Granted, it doesn't go real far, but it, it addresses some of our complaint areas.
Okay.
2018, we had the same, same thing. We did a $99,000. That one was actually right on the money. Brian Bryant bid that and bid it really tight, and we got it for $99,000.
Okay.
Pretty much the budget. So we did a project then. I would have said in 2019, we'd have done one as well. The problem is, we didn't realize that this was not going to, we felt like this is definitely brick street type work here, that we need to, Molberg needs, Molberg needs brick street work. So we thought we would do that here and fix what we could, and probably get into a lot of the bricks. I don't know if we're going to get into quite as much as we thought, but also, then we didn't get it done in 2019, so we really just had to throw the, the funds over the fence in 2020. It's gas tax dollars, and so they're, they're in here. I don't know if we could do another brick street program this year, but I guess my, my hope is, we can continue, start continuing back on that track next year.
Great. So just since 2017, we have been able to devote the entire
$99,000.
budgeted amount
$79,000, correct.
to the specific area. Thank you.
Yep, yes.
I appreciate having that reassurance, because my sense was, I know that we have to budget and then realign that budget when we get bids in.
Correct, right.
And appreciate seeing that, that we have spent that on that every year.
And I don't know who this questions. Did you have more?
No, I'm good.
Because I know we're, we're taking from some, some of our funds to make this happen. Is, is this something we do on a regular basis? I know it's kind of hard to budget. I mean, when we're talking about bricks, you're talking about micro-surfacing. You're always given an estimate, so, you know, I'm afraid if you lumped it all into one, into one fund, you'd not get maybe the brick done, or you wouldn't get the chip sealed, the micro sealing. So, but is this something we've done in the past?
It is. I'll just kind of go to, since you have, 2018 is probably, or 2019 is probably our best example of that. That was really hard to read. I'm not sure they gave you...
You know, what we have as a handout is different than what's on this.
I know. It doesn't show the, the side. This is more Debbie's original SubCIP. I guess what I'll, can you blow that up right there? This is a, a project that was done in, pull that back here, right, right here in this corner, right here in this down over, yeah, there you go. 2018 and 19, we did projects on Ninth Street. We're all aware of those. So that was an example of, we had some federal fund exchange dollars for that project, $500,000-ish approximately. So we're able to make that go pretty far, but it's, it doesn't do the whole project, and so it doesn't quite get the whole project. So we went to...
Yeah, that's what I was looking for.
Right in there, it would be, we, here it is. This is Ninth Street curb and gutter repair. So we bid budgeted 405 out of the, the gas tax, or not the gas tax, the federal fund exchange dollars. Actual bids came in at 605, so then we, for those previous two years, they were similar. We got similar prices for it. So we used curb and gutter work, minor concrete rehab work, sidewalk ramps and sidewalks. I mean, it is old infrastructure, and so you're using, you are improving your sidewalks, you're improving your ramps, you're, some of the storm sewer money we used as well, because we're improving our inlets along that road. So we just felt like it's a, a good spot to, that's how we nickel-and-dimed it, to make it work, I guess. And I don't know if that's the right way to do it. We can try to figure out some budget in the future for those kind of projects.
And I'm not saying it's wrong. I was just asking if it was standard.
We do have a history of it. As projects come in, and, you know, we, we provided a great level, a considerable level of detail
Right.
as part of the budget, and as we get the bids in, we kind of have to go back and adjust.
And I do appreciate the way we do it, and we show where it's coming out of. And I mean, it's, sometimes you have to prioritize, and so I'm not, I'm just, just asking if this is something that we've done for, you know, for
Yes.
in the, in the past, so.
And I am so sorry if my request wasn't clear, but that's precisely like what I was looking for
What you're looking for, okay.
to kind of see where, just where we have shifted the funds from.
Yeah.
So if it would be possible to get that emailed, that would be
Yep, we can send that out.
That would be really helpful.
You can see it.
I mean, I'm sure I could find it if I dig through enough packets.
Well, it's interesting, Kent, Kent Johnson's, my staff engineer, does the majority of this. He, he keeps this meticulous list. You can see how, how, how long this one got. It was, we had a lot of moving things around and trying to make sure we spend the money. Our goal is to spend the money, so that, you know, we, we try to come in. If we look at, I think, I feel like 18 and 17 were our best years. We came within 1% of spending all the money, and we didn't go over. We use our contingencies, but we didn't go over. So that, that is the goal. Whereas last year, I felt like was not as good a year for us with 19. We didn't get this one bid, and we had to, we gave money back for sales, for the sales tax, kind of budget crunch we had last year, and so we weren't sure how much that was going to be. And so then when we figured out what was going to be, we didn't, we were not able to bid all the projects last year, but we still, we got majority of them done, and we ended up building the Mill and Inlay project right at the end, and spent the majority of the money that way. So that's our goal is, but we tracked this all year long. So hopefully today, you see pavement ceiling, and you see Mulberry Streets, and you see where we're taking the money from and where it's going, and you'll continue to get that every, every time with yellow highlights and lots of moving things around, just to make things work.
Appreciate it.
So 19 was part of the package, right?
19.
The sheet that Commissioner Hodges is talking about.
Twenty.
Twenty.
That's all she's got, is 20. That's this year.
So you want 17, 18, and 19?
Yeah, right, and she wants the one that...
If Kent Johnson has those readily available, or, okay.
We'll make copies before you leave.
Yeah, because we have, this is, this is, this was the original starting point that Debbie had, and then we have this, this is where it ends up at the end of the year. This is where it starts, so it's, it's a process. Other questions?
Okay. Any comments from the public? Okay. If not, I'll bring it back up front here. Do we have a motion?
Mayor Hoppick, I move we award the contract for Project 2009, Mulberry Storm Sewer at the Smokey Hill LLC, in the amount of $461,555.55, with a 4.9% contingency of $22,687.45, for a total of $484,243.
Second?
Okay. We have a motion and a second to award the contract for Project Number 2009. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That carries 5-0. That leads us to Item Number 7.2.
Item 7.2, Consider Contract for 2020 Pavement Ceiling Project Number 2003.
Back again. Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. Dan Stack, City Engineer. This is kind of our first of our annual pavement ceiling program. You'll see a lot of these over the next month. We felt crack seal or pavement ceiling with the, filling in the crack spaces is what this is. On our, a lot of our roads through the winter take a, a beating, and you'll see after time, they start, those cracks start to open up, and can, I guess basically, you'll see potholes or what form. You see a few of them out there today, but usually, if you see a pothole, you'll see where crack wasn't filled, or we haven't gotten there yet. So that, that is something we really try to keep up with. We have 148 miles of asphalt streets, so we really keep up, we try to keep up with those on a five to seven-year cycle. We've done, averaged around, you know, mid twenties a year, so we're, we're keeping up with it to a certain extent. This year, we didn't feel like we had as much 20 centerline miles as all we're doing this year. We did a lot of asphalt work the last few years, and you can see the 164 miles actually gets us over our 148, which, of course, the 164 includes some concrete streets. So we are starting to cover some concrete streets with U-bass or double micro-surfacing. So our, I just put a plug in for that, because that's our, our concrete roads are great, but they just, after a while, they're rough, and they cracked up, and you're not driving in the mud, and you can drive over them just fine. They're actually good traffic calming, depending on what streets you live on, but, and they're not, you know, usually aren't going anywhere. They're just really rough. So we've tried to start covering them with, with the black asphalt, which is either asphalt overlays, U-basses, which is ultra-thin bonded asphalt surface. You'll get another blue sheet on that in a few weeks. That's, it's just basically a thinner lift of asphalt, and then, or, or double micro-surfacing, which is the thinnest lift of asphalt, but similar to, to the ultra-thin bonded asphalt surfacing. So most of these, most of these streets will be recovered with some, one of those treatments. So we like to cover cracks, do the, the ceiling before we actually cover the cracks with the whole surfacing, and that keeps things from reflecting through and keeps it flexible, and we feel like it gives us the best bang for our buck. So from a city engineer and a pavement manager guy, I, I love crack seal. It's the best, cheapest, most cost-effective thing we can do. If we can crack seal the whole city every year, that would not be a bad thing. But it doesn't look the best, and it's, it's kind of a pain. So it's not easy for, to get bidders on it. Luckily, we still get them, but the costs are going up. We have noticed. There was a time where a couple of our bidders were really competing for it. It wasn't, I don't know if the economy wasn't as good or what, but, you know, to see 83, 85 cents some of those years, that's, that's amazing to think. And both those contractors would tell you, oh, yeah, we lost money those years, so we had to bid it higher. And, but they, they kept their guys busy in the winter, and so we felt like it, it was working for us, and they bid it twice. But then since then, it's really, it started to go up again. So we feel like that's probably more reflective of what it should be. It, you know, it was in the mid, mid dollars when I first got here in the 2008, '09, '10 timeframe. So kind of jumped up, went back down, now it's back up to $1.14. We asked the contractor why? They said, yeah, just labor, of course, fuel prices, all those things. We don't feel like fuel prices is a great excuse, but maybe it was when they bid it, I guess. Right now, fuel prices are pretty good. So we would, it's a little bit over our budget. We were 250, so 258 is what they came in at. We're proposing a 4-ish percent contingency. We usually do find some streets that we, that tie onto something that we get. We try to make sure we spend this money, but we typically don't get too far into the contingency, but we were asking for a little bit, just in case. I'll stand for questions.
Any questions?
Okay. I'm going to, I'm going to mention two of my, my pet projects here.
Okay.
Number one is, I would like to see some sort of comparison on these projects of how much of this is main streets and how much is neighborhood streets
Neighborhoods and main streets.
for the, for the sales tax. And just for my own satisfaction, I went through and highlighted the streets that we're doing that are also on the main trafficways ordinance. And actually, it does work out fairly well in favor of neighborhood streets in this particular case.
Take it.
We're doing a lot of streets other than our main trafficways, so I'm glad to see that. But I would like to see a more formal comparison on any of our street stuff. Now, it might take a little while to get
Might.
in the process, but I, I just think that's something we need to start, start looking at.
Yeah, I think Mike has asked for that. Jim has asked our staff for that, and I know we have done some analysis on that already. So we're, we should be able to get that to you.
And the other thing that I'm, I'm going to mention is, I would like to see us, anytime we work on streets, and we did this up and down Ninth Street, is try to coordinate a sidewalk program with the street work, so that we're, we're looking at, and I believe our policy is in arterials, we pick up the sidewalk work, and if they're not arterials, then we use code enforcement to encourage the property owners to take care of their sidewalks. I would like to use the, the street program as a mechanism to get, getting to a little more formalized way of doing that and getting some of our sidewalks in a little better shape. And I think it's, it's perfectly acceptable, at least in my mind, to use the sales tax money for that. It's part of the transportation system. And I've seen, you know, quite a number of times, I can remember one specifically on Roach, where you have sidewalk, and then you have no sidewalk, and then you have sidewalk of seeing several times people walking down the street simply because there was no sidewalk in that two or three block section. So I'd, I'd really like to try to start addressing that on a little more formal basis also.
Yeah, and I think we, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, that's fine. I'm through.
I think we can tackle that going forward. There's a couple of considerations. One is just, if the expectation is kind of have that bang for your buck, we improve the street and we improve the sidewalk, crack ceiling is not the thing that makes the impression that we improved the street. The Mill and Inlay, the following year...
Yeah, I, I understand that there, there may be levels, and we might not choose to do it with crack ceiling, but, you know, I'd, at some point, I'd like to see sort of a package deal.
And if we're truly going to do it, we're going to need to look at the, the cost of sidewalk, because that, that might increase distance to the point we have to offset and contract on street work to balance out the sidewalk.
It is, it's, there's no doubt there'll be a balance to doing that. Yes.
We currently budget, yeah, around $50,000 for sidewalks, and we do $40,000 for sidewalk ramps. And some of those, there is a federal mandate to do sidewalk, to, to make sure there's a sidewalk ramp, an accessible ramp, when you do maintenance to an arterial street. So Commissioner France knows about that. So that's something we, we have to kind of go first on that. Any, any areas that we're doing Mill and overlays or higher-level maintenance, it's always been a question on whether micro-surfacing is, takes that into account. I think they've ruled that it doesn't, but we think ultra-thin bonded asphalt surfacing does. So anyway, we have to use the sidewalk ramp money in those areas first than any extra we use in residential areas or other areas of town. But the, it's not a real big budget, so we may have to maybe try to balance in a little more money on those two. But, you know, it just depends. That's, you can see how we come up with these dollars. They're, it's all, it's, it's gas tax dollars. I mean, there is sales tax dollars available as well. We have federal fund exchange dollars, so, you know, there's ways.
Let me be specific. I'm all for spending more on the sidewalks and, and creating some kind of balance between those various transportation alternatives.
Okay. Other questions?
Any other questions?
Nope.
Any, any public comment? If not, I'll bring it back to the commission.
Mayor Hoppick, I move that we award Project Number 20003, 2020 Pavement Ceiling to Circle C Construction of Goddard, Kansas, in the amount of $258,687.66, with an $11,312.34, 4.3% construction contingency, for a total of an authorization of $270,000.
Second?
And a motion and a second to award Project Number 20003 to Circle C Construction of Goddard, Kansas. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 5-0. That will move us into Development Business, 8.1.
Item 8.1, Resolution Number 20-7799, authorizing the mayor to execute a license agreement allowing the installation of a private sanitary sewer lines and grease interceptor in Strand Plaza, abutting the Barolo Grill Restaurant at 112 South Santa Fe Avenue.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. I'm going to address you from over here, because we're balancing out sharing our graphics. So what you have on the screen is a aerial photo. The area outlined in blue is the space that's currently under renovation to create a Barolo Grill Restaurant at 112 South Santa Fe Avenue. And that restaurant, when finished, will contain about 5,200 square feet. There is a plan to have a full-service outdoor patio, which this commission approved through a license agreement to occur on city-owned Strand Plaza. There'll be a full-service bar and lounge, and they also plan to have a private meeting room. On the original building permit plans that were submitted, the plan was to have a sewer that came out of the back of the building and went directly to the alley, and that's going to be down at the bottom of the screen there. And so, let's see if I can get this to move. So the, the grease trap or grease interceptor would have been on private property at that time, but then the project designers identified that this route resulted in too many conflicts with underground utilities already in place. So an alternate plan was submitted, and that alternate plan showed the sewer coming out the south side of the building into Strand Plaza, and a grease interceptor located in the floor of Strand Plaza just outside the approved sidewalk dining area. When staff received that revised plan, it indicated to the applicant and their contractors that staff didn't feel like we had the authority to approve that design change, because the improvements were on city-owned property. So we recommended a license agreement as the appropriate mechanism to allow the permanent installation of a grease trap on the city-owned property. Following that time, during the fall, there was a lot of verbal discussion about putting the grease trap or grease interceptor in the island itself. One report we received was that the plan was to basically remove or eliminate the, the north quarter of the planter and just permanently eliminate that portion of the planter. And then there was another report that it was going to go in the planter itself. And then there was another report that it was gonna go in the planter itself. So I had a meeting with the restaurant owner and manager. We got a license agreement application filed, and we were able to get plans that showed the interceptor not being in the, the floor of the patio here, but actually in, inside the planter. Then we got further clarification that this was their, their plan was, and their justification was, that the grease interceptor cannot go in its original location without substantial cost and rework of existing underground lines. They felt that this option was the most minimally invasive alternate location. Their plan now calls for temporary demolition of the planning bed curb and patio concrete, and they would restore all those damaged features and return them to their original condition. The planning bed would be filled back in with soil and topped out with new mulch and landscape materials to help screen that area from the outdoor dining. And they indicated that existing trees in the planter will not be damaged or removed. I'm not sure that's gonna be the case. It seems likely to staff that probably the one existing tree that's there is likely to be removed. So I think I have a photograph of that, that ground level. So that is a, a view that, that in this case came out sideways, but there's a tree right next to, where we put this yellow measuring wheel is right next to this tree, and that, that location is the location where we would have the anticipated location of the grease trap. So we had sent this out to review for local utilities to review. Several of the utilities did not respond to our first request for comments. We sent out a second review. We got all the comments back. Primary concern that we received was from West, West Dar, or now Evergy. They have an underground line in the alley in close proximity to the planter, and that line serves most of the west half of downtown Salina. And so they wanted to make sure that the applicant's contractors were very aware of that and that they be sure to use one call to address those locates. So I think we have a plumbing diagram in your, this is in your packet as well, but this is kind of a, a roadmap of what it would look. You're, and looking at this view, you're looking west, and there's restrooms over here, so there'd be a sewer coming out. This was the original location. This is the revised location of the interceptor. And they would have lines coming out of the kitchen as well, going through the interceptor and then connecting to the sewer and the alley. So the top of the screen is west, and so this planter is just outside the proposed sidewalk dining area. We've identified three alternatives for your consideration this afternoon. One would be to approve resolution twenty dash seven seven nine nine and authorize the mayor to execute a license agreement with Girong LLC, which is the record owner of the property. And that would allow the installation of both private sanitary sewer lines and the interceptor. And that would be subject to any conditions you think are appropriate. You could postpone consideration of the request to a future meeting date if you feel additional information is needed from staff or the applicant. Or you could decline to approve the proposed license agreement and provide further direction to the applicant and to staff. We provided in your packets underneath the, the commission action, two possible conditions that you can incorporate if you chose option one and wanted to prove this subject to specific conditions. The first one deals with fully restoring the plaza and landscape planter to their original construction and that at no expense to the city. And that restoration work would be done under the supervision of the Public Works Department, who's been overseeing other streetscape projects. And then the second condition deals with the plant materials itself, that they coordinate and work with the city forester to get approval for any plant materials that would go back. And those two conditions are incorporated into the license agreement draft that is in your packet. So with that, I think I'd be open to any questions that you have.
I had a...
I've got a couple whenever you're done.
Couple of quick questions. On the staff recommendation on the restoring the pla, uh, the planter, are they gonna have to, to do something? When you're talking about the planter, are you talking about the concrete area of the planter then?
There is, um, this area here, this is a concrete curbing all around it.
Right.
And they're gonna have to go in and basically cut the curb, remove the curb, go in there, excavate, soil out. The interceptor will essentially be placed underground with just the manholes exposed, so they're gonna have to go in there and do quite a bit of excavation. And so a lot of this curbing around the edge would be removed, so that would have to be restored back. And then there will be some excavation of the patio surface because of those sanitary sewer lines that are coming out.
And as far as the plants go, anything will be an improvement to what's there, I think. But my question is, who will be responsible for maintaining those plants once they're replaced? Will that be the city's responsibility then?
Well, according to the, what they offered out, put on their plant notes, is that the, the owner would maintain the landscape materials as part of the patio dining area. So the proposed license agreement that's in front of you, if approved as drafted, the, the sidewalk dining area goes right to the edge of this. It would extend the obligation so that Barolo Grill would be obligated to maintain the plantings in that island once they're reestablished, not the city.
And the resolution actually provides, not only for the landscape maintenance, but for them to be responsible for the cost of watering.
Okay. The, when we get to the point of making the motion, do we include the staff recommendations of one and two? How do we want to handle that?
Well, we were, um, we were assuming that you might, if you wanted to grant approval, you might want some specific conditions to be part of any motion. So one option would be, we, we have the option there, subject to any conditions the commission deems appropriate. If someone wanted to choose option one as their action, they could approve the resolution authorizing the mayor to sign and including the two conditions recommended by staff in its report.
Okay.
That would cover those. Those are already in the license agreement, but we pulled them out separate in the report so you could see them.
Okay.
Are you done?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry. What, um, just a few questions. What was the, what's the difference in cost between the original location and the location in the planter?
I do not have a, a dollar estimate. As near as I could tell from what they described to me, that the, what was in the area off to the right, this is, this is the building and their kitchen. They were just gonna come straight out to the west. That whatever the, what was between them and the alley, the, the density of the utilities there was going to be too costly of an option. So they, they moved it from there first to here, and then, and then the second revision was to put it in the planter itself. But we did not get a quantified dollar figure. They just said that there would be a substantial cost and have to rework and relocate a number of existing underground lines. And our experience, our alleys downtown are the life artery of all sorts of utilities, and there's everything that you can imagine back there. So I think they were looking for the location with the fewest utility conflicts.
And, and I understand the, with, with the utility conflicts, some, a, a piece of information that I feel like I need is, and I'm just throwing out numbers here, I don't know what a grease interceptor costs in the least, but if it's, say, a ten thousand dollar project to put it in its originally proposed place versus, you know, like, you know, a five thousand dollars, it, it helps me weigh what is substantial versus what is not substantial. And the reason that I, that I'm going there is, when I was with Salina downtown, we have had a history of downtown odor problems. And it's always been my contention that we have issues with, like, our grease interceptors. And, you know, now that we've got downtown done up absolutely beautifully and we're looking at upgrading areas like this, my concern is, a couple, well, actually, I have a, a couple concerns. The first is, one, that we have these things located in areas that are easily, easily accessible. And also, I'm assuming that what you see in the planter is just going to be the manhole covers? You're, I mean, all the rest of that is located below ground, correct? Am I assuming that correctly?
That is correct.
Okay.
That's part of my challenge in putting this report together for you, 'cause there's probably no one on staff who knows less about grease interceptors than I do. But we do have Martha here, and she knows a lot about grease interceptors.
I don't, I mean, and, and certainly, if you, if you want to speak to it, Ms. Tasker, go for it. But I'm just looking at having two manhole covers located in a planting area, and not only are we, and we don't have plans to see what those, what the revised landscape is going to look like, to see how they're going to be able to shield or camouflage the...
Well, that, that is an option for you to consider. The way that I had the recommended condition and had structured, the agreement was that they would have to submit a replacement planning plan for review and approval by the city forester. If you wanted to modify that and have them submit the restoration planting plan for your review and approval, that is certainly an option instead of delegating that to the city forester. But I would agree that that's, it's not our finest planting bed in terms of the amount of material or the condition of material. The hope is that when we're, the work is complete, and I guess I kind of had the, the same question, and that's why I was looking to Ms. Tasker, because when I was reviewing this, one of the first questions I had was, why would you want that so close to the area where people are dining outside?
Right.
But I'll have to defer to Ms. Tasker about odors or impacts, or, she works with a number of restaurants on their, both their design and location of the grease interceptor, so I'm not that familiar with their characteristics or their odor-producing characteristics.
And I'm, and I'm not a gardener by any means, but I'm assuming, just looking at your diagram and looking at what they look like, just Googling them, that's gonna create a pretty large space within that planter where you're not going to have much depth of, of, of field dirt. So you're going to be a little bit limited in terms of what you can plant above and around those, I would think. And it, I may be belaboring the point, but I'm just thinking about people getting in and out, especially since we're putting in a brand-new grease interceptor. And I don't know how much those need to be monitored in the beginning until there's some sort of benchmark established about how often that they need to be cleaned out or drained or whatever. And I've, I'm just, I, I, I guess I'm just a little bit concerned. I'm assuming that there's only probably, what, a foot between where you see the top of the manhole cover and then that, the, what I'm assuming is like a big concrete pit structure thing?
Yeah, so I would, in interpreting that, you're probably no more than four to six inches of soil going back on top of the concrete vault, as it's been explained to me in talking with our building official. The only thing that would be visible at the surface would be the two manhole covers, but the, the concrete vault that would be down below, I was estimating there'd be about four to six inches of field dirt on top of those that would be available to support plant material.
Martha, did you wanna have any input for us?
I bugger Martha about smells downtown every single month.
Unfortunately, we found out a lot of them came from inside the buildings.
My buildings.
And piping. And I would say on the grease interceptors, a lot of the restaurants that have drive-throughs, you might actually be driving over those with your car to go through and pick up your food. So the grease interceptors are typically, these type are located outside. And I don't know that I could say I agree or disagree with Dean about the amount of dirt over the top of the concrete slab, because it's how their piping elevations work out. Typically, we see the concrete portion down in the ground some, and these are fairly deep sewer lines coming out of there unless they had a pump station. And I don't remember on this one, Dean, if they got a pump station to pump it out of the basement.
As far as I know, it's just gravity coming out of the kitchen and the restrooms.
Okay. So a lot of times, you'll see those, the lids at surface, and then those round, what we call concrete rings, will be whatever it takes to get it down to an elevation where the box, they don't like to build the concrete box any taller than they need to, and then they use those concrete grade rings to get to elevation. So I don't know if I can confirm the elevation, because we haven't seen that much detail. We haven't got the shop drawings for the grease interceptor for this particular project. We asked for those details. But typically, if these are constructed right, odor's not your issue with them. They're sealed up, and they are gonna have some odor when you do take the lid off and they clean them and, and flush them out. So there will be a time when there is some odor, but most companies work to have that happen outside of lunchtime.
Yeah, I can't imagine, you know, sitting there having a sandwich and having the guy sucking out a manhole next to me.
There's a lot of coordination to go with that. I don't know if I've answered your question, but this is a typical drawing for a grease interceptor, but it's not the specific detail or drawing for the specific location, which could change some of the aspects. And Dean, you may have talked to them about how much dirt cover, or...
I just had some conversations about them. I, it's correct, we don't know exactly the depth that the concrete vault's gonna be buried, buried to. But if it's, if the sewers are deeper, then the vault's gonna be deeper, which would give us a, a higher level of soil to fill back.
Those rings will be about two foot in diameter roughly, and they may be farther apart. Again, we don't have the shop drawing that shows physically exactly how those are built. Typically, those frame and ring and cover are off to the edges, so when you take that off, you can reach those pipes that are below, be able to clean those out or pull a sample from them if you choose. So the drawing isn't exactly like you would see in the field. It's pretty schematic.
Yeah, on the drawing where they show the, the restaurant and the seating and stuff, is that drawn to scale, do you know, Dean?
I'm gonna see what I have, the, the one that is a...
It'd be a number four attachment, the plumbing diagram.
Okay. Find my stuff.
Mayor Hoppick, there's also one that I just saw. I hadn't seen it earlier, the Exhibit A, the site plan, that, that has that in there too. I don't know if that's more, I don't know if it's to scale.
Drawn to scale or...
Right.
Because if they are, it appears that there's, you know, room, there's plenty of ground cover where there's pampas grass, knockout rose that can, that can grow to an elevation that would hide that, those manhole covers, I think, without any problem.
The original one, Dan Stack and I looked at that, or this drawing, to try to determine, and he had some photos.
Right.
And we kind of came to the same conclusion. There is some, some additional area where there would be topsoil and such that would miss those. But we didn't lay a scale on it and see if it's exactly to measurement, but that is a fairly large odd-shaped planter. a fairly large, odd-shaped planter.
Right.
The dimensions on the planter, we went out and measured it, and it's trapezoid in shape, but the north-south width at its maximum is about 20 feet, and the east-west dimension's about 25 feet. So it is a fairly large planter.
So I, I'm guessing that when they go to put that in there, we could guide them somewhat, that they could put that in a location where there'd be enough room to plant around it?
Yeah, I don't think you'd want it so close to an edge that you couldn't have anything. And it's this side over here where you've actually got seating that goes right to here to the edge of the planter, and so you would think that you would want space to have some plant material here as a buffer between the seating and the actual installed interceptor.
So it's probably not too far out of scale. Typically, a concrete grease interceptor like this might be like six-foot outside dimensions by 10-foot, and that would be a reasonable, fairly large one. So there is a lot of space around it according to our first look at this.
And then Martha, just to clarify, those specs would then be clarified during the building permit process with inspections?
Whenever we have a project like this, we ask to see the shop drawings or their catalog cuts for other terms for that, of exactly what they're going to supply, size, dimensions, so that we can confirm that it meets the demand or the requirement for the restaurant. And we get all of those specifics at that time, that's how it's laid out. And we always note about where the manholes and the rings go, so that fits our standards in detail. So we do get a look at that before it gets installed, or at least that's a note we make, and we look for that and intend to see it in advance. And Building Services does a pretty good job of reminding me if we've missed something, so.
Okay. Any other questions for staff?
Just to confirm, the responsibility for this piece of infrastructure is solely with the Barolo Grill. And in the event that Barolo Grill should close, and another restaurant opens in its place, would we then execute a new agreement with the new restaurant owner? If it never becomes a restaurant again, who is, would be responsible for, like, mothballing it or whatever needs to occur, since it's on our property and it's not...
Well, in Section 8 of the license agreement, if they were to cease being a restaurant, there wasn't a restaurant there at all, and it was converted to another use, we would send notice of termination of the license agreement to the owners. In that event of that termination, the licensee, in this case, the responsible party is Giorong LLC, shall remove and/or modify the sewer lines and grease interceptor without cost to the city.
Okay. Thank you.
Kesh, a question for Mr. Bankston is whether he sees a need for any additional language about that in terms of, this doesn't address the scenario where the city has to remove it and assess the cost. Is that something that would give greater assurances that takes place? Or this is our standard, this is our standard termination language in all of our license agreements? We haven't had many cases where we've had to have anyone remove anything, but it's in Section 8 that says if they cease to use it anymore, then we can provide them with notice, and it must be removed at, without cost to the city. In answer to the first question, the way this agreement is set up is that it runs with the land. Once it's executed, it would be recorded, and it would run with this property. So if you had a new and different restaurant, and they wanted to continue to use that, they would be able to step into the shoes of Barolo Grill. It would run with the land until it ceased to be used for that purpose. So it's not, it's not, it is an agreement with the current owner, but it would run with the land and be binding on successors as well. It's only if it ceased to be used at all for a restaurant or for any purpose relating to the grease interceptor that it would terminate.
And Mr. Andrew, I have just one more question. Do we have any kind of codes or any kind of a maintenance or inspection schedule for inspecting these devices to make sure they're, I'm sorry, Ms. Tasker, I'm going to make you get up again, to ensure that they're performing like they should be? Or do we just wait for a complaint to occur?
Every grease interceptor that's installed, we take by some information to the restaurants and kind of give them a list of who comes to town and cleans those. And typically, if those are designed right and they don't clean them when they should, it turns into a problem for them as the owner, and they notice it. So once they get the schedule, depends upon the amount of grease at each location, how often they need to be cleaned, but we do keep records of when they clean them.
Okay.
And where, we have an installation list of all of the grease interceptors, at least for the last 15 years that we've been tracking and keeping track of. And when we locate one, we take pictures, keep all the data. And we have a form that they fill out when they're cleaned, and they submit that to us. And do we police them in a serious manner? No, but usually if they don't do their job on their end, they're the first to notice the problem.
Right.
So, but we do keep track of them if that helps.
Yeah, thank you, it does, thank you.
Mr. Bankston?
Yes, if I may, Mayor, in response to Commissioner Hodges' question, and the example you raise, this document is of the nature of a license agreement, is ordinarily one that we want to, and it now indicates that it is binding upon the land and continues, even if there were a change in ownership. The phenomena of the potential, I guess you would say, possible interruption of business usage as a restaurant if it were to change hands, and if there was a period of time, am I correct, Mr. Andrew, that that would be a phenomena where we could find ourselves without a private party responsible for maintaining that interceptor?
That is correct. Or we might be in an interim period. The maintenance obligation also for the planter and the landscaping would run with the land, but the situation where we had a lapse, where there was no occupant at the location, would also mean that there may be no active, you would still have an owner of the property, and the owner would be ultimately responsible, but you could have a scenario where there's a gap or lapse, where there's a change in a period of time where there's no active restaurant use at that location.
Correct me if I'm wrong, in that scenario, we could notice up the property owner, that they're, due to a failure to maintain or lack of use, we're going to invoke termination, and they'd need to remove it at their expense. They might get motivated to go ahead and perform maintenance, or we could carry through with...
Is any maintenance required if it's not being used? The rest, you probably clean it out once when they shut down, but I mean, if you're not cooking...
More the maintenance, the landscaping, and the bed.
Mm-hmm.
We always have the right to terminate and do so at the owner's expense.
I guess I should turn to the expert on my left and say, if somebody buys that property subsequently, there's nothing that's attached to any land, things that you would see, any land documents that you would see that would show any kind of a, an obligation that goes with that property, because it's, this is just a license agreement, it's not...
This will be recorded. It is recorded. And whoever buys it, it runs with the land.
Okay, so the new buyer will know that they have the grease interceptor, and it's their responsibility.
Exactly. And the bed will have to be kept and stuff.
The, this, this will have a, this, the reason you see the legal descriptions in the agreement and all that, that this will be indexed against that property, so that anyone doing a title search or research in the registered deeds office is going to come across not only this agreement, but the exhibit site plan will be attached to that. So that will be picked up in any title search.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any comment from the public? Okay, if not, I'll bring it back to the commission.
Mr. Mayor, I move the city commission approve Resolution Number 207799, authorizing the mayor to execute the license agreement with Giorong LLC to allow the installation of private sanitary sewer lines and a grease interceptor in Strand Plaza, subject to the conditions presented by the staff.
Second.
If I could just ask one last favor, as we're going forward in the future, when a developer presents a but-for argument, I would, it would, it would help me as a commissioner in evaluating that, if, if I can see the numbers. I'm, you know, I understand that their assertions are their assertions, but having cold, hard facts in front of me would, would help make that decision, weigh that decision, whether that's in the best interest.
So you'd like to see cost estimates for Option A versus cost estimates for Option B?
I'm just saying, is a, as a general request for future projects, when, you know, when we're asking to do a different approach or put something on, that's on city property where it, when it could be placed on private property, I think it would just help me weigh the decision. And I understand that business owners have different thresholds of what they consider reasonable and unreasonable, but I think that it would be good for us to have that information so that we could weigh that, because frankly, I do have some concerns about putting it in a planter in the downtown area without knowing what they're up against. I understand that there are utilities, but I don't have the information that I need to determine whether or not that's going to be, you know, whether it's something that we should overlook.
We can bear that in mind going forward, I think we are guilty of...
Yeah, I mean, today, we, we are where we are today, I'm just asking in the future.
Sure. Yeah, I think we're guilty of recognizing electric utility as a pretty big deal and not going so far as to get the numbers.
Commissioner Hodges, I've made a note, we'll amend the application to ask for that information in the future, I can't...
Thank you, yeah, I know, I know, we, like I said, we are where we are today. But thank you, I really appreciate that.
Just one clarification about the motion, and second, the condition as drafted, recommended condition in the report would have the planting plan reviewed by the city forester, reviewed administratively by staff. So if, if there was a desire on the commission that you review what goes back in that planter, that second condition would need to be modified to read city commission instead of city forester. But I just wanted to bring that to your attention in case there was interest in changing that.
I'm satisfied that the staff can review that adequately.
And that's not something that Design Review Board ever takes a look at, in terms of plantings?
Usually not. The, what the Design Review Board would look at, the areas devoted or set aside for planting, but that, the actual planting plan that's, like in the case of the Fieldhouse Project or whatever, that was reviewed by the city forester.
I think the relevancy in the forester as well is, they've been a part of all the rest of the landscaping plan, and in that, I think, can have the correct dialogue to say, this won't go with everything else we already planted, maybe there's some better options.
Yeah, I think the city forester has a pretty good idea what succeeds and fails in our planters downtown.
Okay, we have a motion to approve Resolution Number 207799, including the staff's recommendations. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
That passes four to one. Okay, that leads us into other business. Do we have any other business to come before the commission? Okay, if not, then we have a request for executive session. How long do we need?
I think we can do it in 15 minutes.
Okay, I like the way you think, so, okay.
In that case, I won't ask for five minutes to precede for a break.
Mr. Mayor, I move the city commission recess into executive session for 15 minutes to discuss the subject of negotiations with Saline County relating to the Expo Center lease agreement with legal counsel, based upon the need for consultation with an attorney for the public body, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship pursuant to KSA 45-7319B2, and for the reason that the public discussion of the matter would adversely affect the interest of the city. The open meeting will resume in this room at 5:43.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, to move into executive session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll resume.
We do anticipate action.
Yes, there is possibility of public action following the executive session.
Okay. Okay, we are back in session, and do we have a motion from the commission?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we instruct staff to provide to Saline County an itemization of the Saline County maintenance and improvements to the Expo Center buildings and site proposed by the Saline County, by the City of Salina, in return for a 30-year lease.
Second. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes 5-0.
Commissioner, go complete that correspondence and send it on your behalf yet this evening.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And you will send it to the county administrator?
Correct.
Perfect, okay. Okay, do I have a motion for adjournment?
Move we adjourn.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, see you in two weeks?
Two weeks.
Two weeks, okay.
All right.
Press this day.